It is January 7, 2025, 6:30 PM. I'd like to call the Boarder, the Joint Meeting of the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and then the Police Commission of the Town of Old Sabre. Please rise and join me in the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for the Selectmen? Well, all members are present. The Police Commission is present except for Mr. Van Dossel. Board of Finance?
Board of Finance is present except for Eric. Well, George is usually, that's probably him at the door. And Eric is supposed to be online.
Here's George's here.
Yeah, I knew that was George.
All right. We begin with public comments. Is there anyone in the live audience who would like to comment at this time? If none, if there's anyone in the virtual audience who would like to comment, please raise your hand. Larry, let me know.
No one has raised.
All right. Let's move on to the reason we're here. Chief, I turn it to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for accommodating our request once again of a joint meeting of the Police Commission, Board of Finance, and Board of Selectmen. I appreciate the opportunity to present to all of you all at once. And I appreciate that we spoke about it actually at our department head meeting just a couple hours ago, the quick schedule that has been put in place over the years of the annual budget process that gives us all an opportunity to really have great collaborative discussions earlier than later in the budget process to be able to present a transparent and fiscally sound budget to the citizens of the Town of Old Sabre. So, you know, years ago, Brad mentioned this is his 22nd budget. This is my 20th. So I've been preparing the Police Department budget for 20 years. I thought that was a long time, and then Brad hit me with the 22, so it's not as impressive anymore.
Any prizes?
What's that?
Any prizes?
No, we'll get something maybe. But in the beginning, when we used to do this, everything was a secret. The Police Commission would receive their books with the percent increase and the dollar amount increase, and nobody else would know. No one, the Boards of Commissions would know, or Selectmen would not know, and certainly the townspeople would not know. The Police Commission would reveal those numbers at the first meeting, where there'd be a presentation on the budget, and then there'd be discussion. And then those numbers would circulate around town. There'd be a motion about it. That doesn't exist anymore. The second we have a draft budget, bam, it's up on the internet. Everybody has it to see and review. And so, right off the bat, let's just get to the numbers, right? Because that's why we're here tonight. So our request this year is an additional $101,688 over our current budget for a budgetary increase of 1.82%. There are absolutely positively in this budget proposal no requests for any new personnel, any new programs, any program expansion, or additional personnel hours. None. My message to you is I feel that we're where we should be to provide the services that we proudly provide every single day. So jokingly, any questions? So, you know, look, obviously, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a presentation tonight. But when I was talking, thinking about the presentation, it, it was kind of difficult to figure out what this tenured group wants, right? I've done videos in the past. Some people have liked that, some people have not. I've shared different statistics about different things around town. Some people love that, some people don't. I don't think that I have to, in any way, shape, or form, convince anyone around this very large you in this very small room that we need a police department in the Town of Old Sabre. I think we're all there. So I think I can check that box. What I think I have to do is I have to justify to you the immense cost in the municipal budget for the services that we provide. We are the largest employer on the municipal side of the budget. There's no hiding from that. We are the most expensive department because we are the most unique. No other department operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so, I feel that I have to address many, many, many different things tonight as I present to you to satisfy your inquisitive mind so you can decide how you can support our request. As I do that, and towards the end of the presentation, and following the days following, if anyone around this table has a question about this budget, I want you to reach out to me. I truly want to answer the question. Over the past 20 years, I've had some communication difficulties with different people that have sat in your very seats. And every time I was not able to properly communicate what I was trying to, I sincerely felt bad about that. And so, humbly, I ask each one of you that if I do not answer your questions tonight, that you please present to you the question and work with me. If I'm not catching what you're putting down, ask it a different way so you can get the information that you need. Now, it is not lost on me tonight that I present the fiscal year 26 budget to you less than 24 hours from the release of the PERF report and two days before the presentation by PERF. And that may be on your mind. It is obviously on mine. There is no doubt that this report may be critical of my administration and will most likely affirm what I have repeatedly shared for years with three commissions and boards present this evening, that police officers have left our employ because of me and the high standards and expectations that I hold our police officers to. I make no apologies for ensuring that Old Sabre is a safe community to live, work, and play, and that our taxpayer-funded police officers are the best trained, best equipped, most qualified, and transparent in the business. This does not happen organically nor by accident. It takes strong leadership, strong leadership from me, but more importantly, strong leadership from department supervisors, including our Master Sergeant and all of our Patrol Sergeants. And it takes employee integrity and passion that we see in our dispatchers, our patrol officers, and other valued support personnel. You will see their names and that very sentiment this evening in our budget proposal. Together, as department leaders, we demand each day that our employees possess a moral compass that consistently points north and that their first question to citizens and visitors as ambassadors of the Town of Old Sabre is, "How can I help?" The results of this style of leadership have yielded a fully accredited law enforcement agency that we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation, that delivers superior traditional and non-traditional services every single day. We are an agency comprised of people who have dedicated their professional selves to helping other people, in many cases, complete strangers. We are there for those in need. We make split-second and life and death decisions. We speak for the voiceless. We advocate for victims of crime. We change light bulbs, fix a leaky toilet, catch lost dogs, and literally, literally save human lives. We humbly do this every day with pride and honor and know that we could not do it without the support of the Police Commission, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen for the funding to do our jobs the way they are supposed to do each and every day. The Department of Police Services is not an easy place to work, but it is employee-centered and certainly not toxic. We have an environment where employees have expectations, high expectations. We do things right because it is the right thing to do. There are no cutting corners, no lack of investigative effort, and no taking home a taxpayer-funded paycheck detailed in our budget proposal that we'll review tonight that is not deserved. Good employees, actually what I have right now, great employees. The ones currently employed at OSPD embrace these workplace expectations and exceed them every day because they choose to do something. I am proud of them, and I know that you are proud of them as well. It has never been lost on me during my tenure as Police Chief that I lead employees that have to put on bulletproof vests just simply to go to work, employees who wear and are legally allowed to use a deadly weapon and are allowed to restrict an individual's constitutional rights or make life-altering decisions. I also never forget that they are people, not just public safety professionals. They are moms and dads, brothers and sisters, sons and daughters. And as we review the budget proposal this evening, I ask that you remember that very important fact as well. I have a significant responsibility to all of my employees, one who I do not shy away from and one that I take extremely seriously. The Department of Police Services is also transparent. You'll see tonight in our presentations, as I presented in the past to the Police Commission and various other boards, you can go online now, click around, and see all of our data. You can build your own charts, make your own reports. We are completely transparent. And when we are wrong, we own up to our mistakes and take appropriate action. You see me point out, you'll see me very shortly point out some minor errors, and thank you for those who told us that we had minor errors in our budget presentation. And we'll admit, we made a mistake. We are human, just like everybody else. But we are also duty-bound in protecting individual privacy while possessing empathy for those who we interact with on possibly one of their worst days ever. We serve as community guardians, medical first responders, and thanks to our extremely close and positive relationships with the Old Sabre community as one of the largest fundraising organizations for those who need a little helping hand, everything from diapers to turkeys to toys. And every summer, we do a Shorts for Campaign where we raise money for a community cause or a significant individual need. In fact, we're about to announce to the Goodwin School PTA that over this summer, we raised $7,500 as seed money for their new playground project for our little friends at Goodwin. Perhaps I just announced that. So maybe someone from the PTA is not here, but we'll be presenting them their check very shortly. And we're proud to do these things, right? Before that, we worked with Scotts Committee and significant amount of money, over $10,000 for the lights on the turf field. And we've done stuff for our past hero, who sadly isn't with us anymore, Sean McDonald. I am blessed to work side by side with public safety professionals who proudly serve and humbly serve every single day. I am proud of them, and I am proud of the work they do. It is my job to ensure that the Department of Police Services and its employees are ready to respond at a moment's notice to any crisis, from a very minor, yet extremely important quality of life matter to a critical incident. I believe that we excel at satisfying our mission to our special community every single day. Old Sabre knows that they can count on their police department. They know it to their core. I am not the same person as I was in 2009 when I became the chief. And I'm guessing everyone here is not the same person that they were in 2009. I have grown as a professional and as a person, both with my tenure and experiences, both personally and professionally. I am very hopeful that the final version of the PERF report that we will all see together tomorrow, that I have not seen in advance, properly reflects these indisputable facts that I just spoke about. I hope that PERF has closely reviewed and acted on more than 30 pages of comments that I submitted to the First Selectmen after reviewing their draft report as part of their contract. I hope that there are recommendations that will help us move forward rather than solely concentrating on the past. And I hope it values our current team at OSPD rather than those who have departed either by choice or recommendation. As I have said to the Police Commission on multiple occasions now, I feel that we at OSPD are backed after going through a rebuilding period necessary for our future success. I want to publicly thank the tenured officers and the dispatchers of the department who put in much extra time to carry us through the past 16 months, as well as thank our new employees for joining our team. Thank you to the Police Commission for being with me along the way and unanimously endorsing my ideas related to restaffing the agency. I am very excited about the future of OSPD and the future accomplishments that we will be able to share with our community. It is with these thoughts my commitment to Old Sabre, the safety of my personnel, and care for all the residents and visitors of my hometown, Old Sabre, and the great honor of serving as your Police Chief since 2009 that I respectfully present my proposed fiscal year 26 budget that provides for the continued safe, efficient, effective, and fiscally responsible operation of the Department of Police Services. There are four groups of constituencies that I'm presenting to tonight. Obviously, the Police Commission, the First Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and arguably the most important group, the public. All four have a role in our budget process.
I hope not.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Okay.
So all four have a role in the budget process, right? So we're here tonight in front of three boards. And then soon, the Police Commission will have some special meetings, and they'll make a recommendation and adopt the budget. That obviously goes to our First Selectmen, who will work very hard with our Finance Director, who eventually will present the budget to the Board of Selectmen, who will endorse a budget. And then it will go to the Board of Finance, where they will deliberate and eventually go to our town in the version of a public hearing, then a town meeting, and then a referendum. And so, as I started at the beginning, I'm gonna try to give each group what they need to satisfy their questions about our fiscal meeting. And so, as I do so, I just want to talk about the respect that I have for those four groups. First of all, I know everyone in this room shares my respect for those we serve, right? The public and those who serve, our police officers and our dispatchers. And as I said before, when you look at our budget, you see the names, and you see the step raises, or you go to the town report, and the first thing you do is go to the back page to see how much money the cops made. These folks have families. They're people. You go home and you plan a trip to Disney with your young kids, they do the same thing. They want days off like you want days off. They'd like to be around the family dinner table on Christmas and Thanksgiving and New Year's and Easter, but in our business, we accept that sometimes we're not. But I want you to reflect on that as you look at all that information. I have respect for every elected official in this room and the job that the citizens elected you to do. Some of us disagree on a lot of things. And perhaps maybe some of us are not sending Christmas cards to one another. But I need you to understand, and I'm being very truthful when I say this, I respect your role in our democracy. The town puts you in this chair. You have a job to do. The job is not personal, it's professional. You're no longer a constituency of one, you're a constituency of many. And I respect that each of you has a job to do and that the budget is a big part. And I'm asking for a significant portion of that for the department that I humbly lead. I have tremendous respect for taxpayers. Look, we're the largest budget, but that doesn't mean we spend willy-nilly. You can ask any member of my staff that's been with me for more than 30 days how I tried to stretch a dollar in every way possible. I have never accepted the initial bid or the initial quote on anything since 2009. It's almost become comical when vendors show up with their first draft. Some tenured vendors come with a second draft already, knowing that the first draft is never going to fly. I feel that we have a responsibility to you and the taxpayers because of the significant amount of funds we need to operate to deliver a detailed presentation. There may be some in this room, maybe some watching at home, they're like, "We've seen this show before." We get it. But I believe we have an annual responsibility to talk in depthly and then answer follow-up questions about our fiscal acts. And then finally, I believe in transparency. I do. There are times, as I've mentioned before, as a police department, we have to say, "Oh, we can't talk about that, it's private." Because many of the things we do as an agency when we investigate crimes are personal and private to someone, and we must respect that, as I've mentioned already. But when it comes to our budget, I want to be as transparent as possible, which is why we produced this book, and we have produced this book for more than 20 years. 2004 is my first solo book. We're proud of this. The town is now doing a book very similar, if not better, than what we've presented for more than two decades. We do this so everyone can see what we're thinking about, how we came to a calculation, and where the numbers are. I also appreciate being asked questions and knowing I can refer back to that proposed budget book and say, "Oh, it's on page so-and-so." It's not a get-you game. I'm proud that we did the work in advance and more than happy to show you where you can find it. So I'm gonna try to be very respectful of your time and knowledge. I'm gonna give you the budget overview and needs, go over some of our enforcement statistics. People like to see that. I'll give you a little operational data. I'll talk about our department diversity, which I'm very, very proud of, our staffing. And at the end, I will go over my executive goals. This presentation that is being reported, that you're watching live right now, will not only be available for everyone to watch, but the hard copy of this presentation will be included in our final budget books, and I can send it to everybody around this table tonight when I get home. So everyone can have this presentation. Let's talk about the mistakes first. So I'm gonna tell you about the five different errors in the budget book. The first error is on page three. Patrol Officer Sakato's step was corrected, there was no money difference. So we had the wrong step, number of number, but the dollar amount in the chart was correct. On page seven, we changed the spelling of "personal" to "personette" because that's what it was supposed to be. On page 26, under Dispatch, Sick and Injured Replacement, last year's budget was $16,728 and not $17,728. We changed that, but there was no fiscal impact to the proposal. On page 32, we mixed up the cost of dental insurance among three employees. At the end of the day, there was no fiscal impact to the proposal. The numbers were just simply in the wrong slots associated to the wrong people. And on page 32, we chose to spell dispatcher correctly after one of our commissioners told us that was probably the word to do. So those are the only errors that anyone that has reviewed the budget book has told us about. And again, those will be reflected in the final document that everyone here will receive. So there's the budget process that we talked about. The only thing I want to say that's very important to me is we are 175 days away from this budget starting. And so, a lot of things can happen along the way of this budget process. As an example, our dispatchers are about to go into contractual negotiations that could have an impact on a budget that starts July 1. We know, and I'll get into it a little bit later, we know that we're gonna be doing something within our organizational structure that will happen well before the 175 days are up. Carl and Leanne may find additional savings somewhere within those 175 days. We might get a different quote for healthcare, which could dramatically impact, one way or the other, what the overall budget of the Department of Police Services looks like. So just keep in mind, we're 175 days. What's that?
This is the presentation.
So I know within these 175 days, with all certainty, that we are gonna do a couple things. We're definitely gonna make some promotions, and we're going to fill all of our remaining law enforcement officer vacancies long before July 1. So what we have now, and I'll get to it, I'll show your staff, is a snapshot on January 7. But I feel it's my responsibility to let you know where I think we'll be 175 days from now. So every day, it's a fluid situation. When you employ people, things happen. And as an employer, you have to react to those things. I spoke about my commitment to my personnel. That is definitely there. But when an employee walks in and says, "I have a problem at home, I need FMLA," the response isn't, "Wow, this is gonna be a budget impact." The response is, "How can I help?" And so, as different things happen to employees, the largest part of our budget, as you'll see shortly, 90% this year, things change in our budget. Anybody, can anybody tell me who that lovely person is?
Rachel?
Yeah, Rachel McDonald, yeah, one of our patrol.
Part of the Navy or the Air Force?
Air Force.
Yes, got it.
Rachel, in April of 2024, was deployed for six months to Qatar. I am so incredibly proud of this young lady. She is a sergeant and was assigned command and control of air power of over 21 nations in the region, stretching from northeast Africa across the Middle East to Central and South Africa. She worked as a shift supervisor, different shifts while she was there. And she was solely responsible for supervising over 700 critical communication issues for that region. That's damn impressive, ladies and gentlemen. She is one of your Old Sabre police officers. But while she was deployed for six months, not only did we make care packages and send them to her, not only did I talk about how proud I was of her, I showed up at her last midnight shift roll call to fake, like, give her things to bring over, but really, I just wanted to give her a hug and say, "Good luck and be safe and please come home." We were without a police officer for six months. That impacts the budget. I am so proud that in addition to Rachel, I have two other patrol officers that are in the reserves. Christopher Sakato is in the Marine Corps, and Charles Henry, who's in the back, is in the United States Army. I am very proud of their service. Their service to our country requires them to be gone one week in a month, occasionally two weeks out of the year, to be assigned to 30-plus-day schools, and as in Rachel's case, be deployed for over six months. These are things that I don't know about 175 days away from the budget. And so, we must be prepared for when our local heroes go abroad to fulfill their military obligations to the United States of America. I'm also very, very proud. Oh, let me, let me back up for a second. While Rachel was deployed, she actually put us in for an award as a patriotic employer. And that was, that was presented to me, but really, this award belongs to everybody in this room. Because without your support, she can't do what she does. And those other two fine gentlemen. she can't do what she does. And those other two fine gentlemen can't do what they do. And so I'll pass this around, Bruce, if you don't mind, just so everyone can take a look at that and enjoy your piece of it.
Is she back now?
She is back. She came back December 1st.
Was she not at the?
This is a lot of questions, okay?
Sorry.
I'm also extremely proud to tell everybody in this room, as I recently told the police commission, that for the first time in Old Sabre Police Department history, we are a fully accredited agency by the Police Officer Standards and Training Council in accordance with the Police Accountability Act. And I'd like to give you some numbers. There are three different tiers of accreditation, one, two, and three being the highest. Tier one had to be achieved by November of 2023. We did that in September of 2023. Tier two had to be finished by December 2025. And we achieved that in November of 2023. Tier three has to be achieved by December of 2026. And we achieved that in December of 2024. I brought Patrolman Mulardo to the police commission for her to present this as our accreditation coordinator. But being a fully accredited agency means that we were independently reviewed. All of our policies and procedures and backup documents were independently reviewed by a committee, sent to a subcommittee of the Post Council, and then approved by the Post Council for full accreditation. There are 157 police departments in the state of Connecticut that have to adhere to these standards in accordance with the law. Thirty-six of those agencies are Kalia certified. They do not have to obtain state certification because they've paid, those communities have paid the money for them to go through the very robust Kalia process. Sixty-three agencies have reached that first mark, tier one. Nineteen agencies have reached tier two already. And only 16 agencies have accomplished what we have at tier three. And there's currently two agencies not compliant. I would like everyone to try to understand, and I live it, so I know it's different for you, the significance of this. Administratively, this may be one of our finest accomplishments in a very long line. And I'm very proud of it and the people who worked on it. Here's our fiscal request history. So again, 1.82%, and you can go back to fiscal year 20. Leanne, the UCOA year finally dropped off of this line. But I went back to fiscal year 20, and you can see the various requests over the years. And, you know, listen, I'm proud of our requests. But our request comes about because we just followed the things that we follow year after year after year, which will be demonstrated very shortly. So fans, based on the same formulas with current data, right? No new initiatives, no new sworn personnel. Maintaining existing efficiencies, maintaining services provided the way they are today, and of course, maintaining a safe, efficient, effective operation. One of the things that you will see that I have proposed is the complete elimination of one of our K-9 units. We have not had two K-9 units for quite some time. And I believe, instead of funding that line item, hoping that we may start a second dog, that if that is ever our intention, we should have to come to the police commission, the Board of Selectment, and the Board of Finance to justify that second K-9. I cannot do so at this time. And so therefore, in my budget proposal, that position has been eliminated, reducing the budget around $10,000. What are the major budget drivers? Well, of course, no surprise here, right? It is police officer and employee salaries and benefits. 90.03% is the number this year, related to personnel expense. So think about that. About 10% of our budget is about commodities. Everything else is about our personnel. And many of those things related to personnel are contractual. And so I'm not a budget hero for bringing in a 1 point something increase. I'm transparent. And I'm showing you how we got there. Here are their other budget drives, right? So there's statutes, the Post Council has policies, the NFPA, our insurance company, obviously, the State Judicial Department, our state Supreme Court, sometimes, that's nice, case law changes for us, professional standards, national trends, obviously, the Federal Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Department of Transportation, the state and federal Department of Public Health, Federal OSHA, CONOSHA, and the Federal Department of Justice and the United States Supreme Court. All those things impact us. So when you see a new Supreme Court decision about search and seizure or rights, that impacts your police department right here in your hometown. When building the requests, here's what I know I need to do. I have to build a budget that's safe, efficient, and effective for operation. I have to make sure I fund our fiscal liabilities. There is no way I'm handing in a draft budget that does not properly fund, in one shape or another, our fiscal liabilities to Leanne Palladino and not getting an angry callback. Right? Her job is to make sure that the town does not put itself in fiscal peril. We can pass a very low budget, people will cheer at the town meeting. There'll be record turnout at the referendum. But if we don't have enough money to fund the things we need to fund for 12 months, we didn't do a good job. And so funding our fiscal liabilities is important. It's possible for us to get creative in doing so. Or acknowledging, as I will do tonight, and I've done in the book that I've handed you, that we know that we're taking a risk with some of our funding requests. Meaning, we're not asking for full funding based on historic use. But when an employee comes to you and says, I'm about to be deployed for six months, that could impact the budget midway through. Which is why it is so important for everyone in this room and everyone listening at home to understand that every single month, the police commission is provided with the transparent budget update. And that update is found online with their agenda. And at their meeting, they get to ask me any question they want about the operating budget, about off-budget accounts, whatever they want. If I don't have the proper answer, I need to get it to them because I report to them. And if I don't get it to them by the next meeting or in between the meetings, there'll be a problem. And I've never not done that. The Board of Finance receives the overall budget, right? Am I correct when I say that? At least monthly? Okay, at least monthly. You would know if something was going completely awry. But before any of that, we have a full-time staff at that hall, in Carl and Leanne, who are going to pick up the phone and say, what is going on with your budget? My point is, is we have a lot of guardrails in place. And we have a lot of transparency in place. And that's good when you're talking about public funding. Obviously, I have the budget for June 24th of 2026 and not January 23rd of 2025. I believe in the formulas. Guys, I had something to do with making them, but I didn't make them. Okay? Paul's late wife, Lisa, and Leanne Palladino have crafted the formulas that we use along with input from me and the police commission. We used to fund things at 80, 85%, 90%. And then there was a year that we looked at actuals and they decided, no, we're going to lower the percentage of funding. And we've done that, and we've been successful. So the formula-based budgeting has worked. Not for me, not for you, but for the taxpayer of the town of Old Sabre. And again, we've given you a very detailed written transparent book that I believe is unlike any product produced by any other police department in our area. Calls for service. So you've heard me over the years talk about the service population versus the resident population, right? The resident population is, you live in Old Sabre, your burglar alarm goes off, we go to your house. We, as a police department, have served the resident population. The very people that pay tax dollars for our services got served. A majority of our service, however, goes to the service population. People who do not live in Old Sabre, but require our services. Someone hit my car in the parking lot, and I live in Clinton. I'm having a medical emergency, but I live in Westbrook. Someone stole my identity. I live in Groton, but I'm here at the Old Sabre Police Department. I'm getting harassed over text messaging. I don't even live in Connecticut, but I came to the closest police department, which is yours. That becomes our investigation. That is service to an individual who does not pay tax dollars to the town of Old Sabre to fund our department. They get the same mutual service, but they're part of our service population. Many of the investigations that we conduct impact people's lives. Listen. In 2009, 2004, when I started presenting the budget, I would stand up here and I would make sure that everyone in this room knew how serious we were every single day. In 2024, I want you to know that we do serious things, but that we also do things that aren't serious. We do things that just help people. So at 3:30 in the morning, when someone calls and says, I'm 72 years old, I live alone, and I cannot get my toilet to stop running. We're the only place to call? And a police officer goes over, but does the police officer necessarily go over to shut off the running toilet? They go to have a human interaction. While they're in that house, they take a look around. Is it a hoarding situation? Does people, does this person have oil in a freezing cold nightlight tonight? Is there food in the fridge? And if there's something lacking, we take action. We have a tremendous relationship with youth and family services. We have stuff at the police department and the ability to go buy stuff to take care of someone in that immediate need. And when the sun rises, we can reach out to family and say, hey, you might want to come check on mom. This is what we found out last night. And so from the critical scenes last night, a gentleman who wanted sadly to kill himself with a firearm, and we had to go through a door in a hotel room, not knowing what we would find, to my neighbor's dog is doing his business on my yard, and I don't like it. We do it all. But imagine the roller coaster ride of the public safety professional that does it. From the dog call to the gun call to the medical call. It's a lot. And I applaud the first electmen through our recent contract negotiation period with our police officers for recognizing that and allowing them to receive the compensation and the benefits that I believe they deserve. I stood in front of all of you and raised a lot of noise. The place is on fire, give them a $10,000 signing book. I said anything I could to start the conversation. The conversation not only started, but it continued. And I thank all of you for having it. And I applaud our union leadership for meeting the town halfway on some of their issues and ratifying a very, very fair contract for both parties. I want to remind you that our calls and our investigations are personal and private, that they're not routine, they can't be generalized, and are usually unique from one call to the next. And I also want to remind you again that the service that we provide cannot get automated. There's no self-checkout in the patrol roster. The services we provide have to be provided by humans to humans. Trust me, ask my staff every year at Strategic Planning. I look for ways to become more efficient. Where can we cut? How can we do things better? What are your ideas? How can we get to this point? There does become a point sometimes where you have reached efficiency for the current set of circumstances. And I really believe in many, many areas in the department operation. And with our fiscal request, we have done just that. Here's a snapshot of our different calls for service and the amount of those calls over the years. Remember that this chart represents two different records management systems. So in 2015, a call might have been triaged a little bit differently than it's being triaged in 2024. 2015, we weren't asking COVID-related questions when people called in with difficulty breathing calls, right, that we're still asking now in 2024. So things evolve, things are different. But when I look at this as a law enforcement leader, I see normalcy. I don't see them as individual numbers, however. I see them as people impacted. And when I look at them, there is nothing that I find alarming. In fact, I find some things that are trending in a better way. Right? So for example, domestic violence calls from 2023 to 2024 went down dramatically, from 53 calls to 37 calls. Again, I don't see them as numbers. I see them as there were less families that had to go through that horrific experience from one year to the next. Now, why is that? Maybe it's a societal approach to mental health, health. Right? Where we're encouraging people to seek help and get counseling and talk to people. Maybe that's the result that we're seeing as boots-on-the-ground service providers. I also see less fraud. And maybe that's because we're doing a better job at educating the public to be wary of schemes. I got a thing on my phone today that my package from the USPS can't be delivered unless I click the link and enter my zip code. But they want much, much more than my zip code. But folks, let me tell you something. When I tell you our work is personal and private, I can share with you that there have been very well-educated, sophisticated individuals in our community that have been subjects of serious fraud, like over $100,000. And we worked hard, not only to find the people that did that, but to get them their funds back. We had a case, literally, where we were able to walk back in the house and hand them their cash. Imagine you're an elderly couple, that's your life savings, and it's gone. And so we've worked with banks and CVS and Walmart and our convenience stores that when people show up in a panic to wire money or buy gift cards, that they press pause and call us. And we can go and make sure that there's not an active crisis at home that we've seen in other communities, or that they're not about to be a subject, a victim of fraud. Our Emergency Communications Center is busy. Last year, they answered 33,725 calls. That's a lot of phone ringing. And our dedicated public safety dispatchers are the link between anyone who needs assistance and those who can provide assistance. Whether you're the public or a police officer calling for help, or a firefighter that's trapped in the building, or an ENT or a paramedic that needs to talk to a doctor to find out how to help patients. Our dispatchers are extremely important. They not only supervise and run our multi-disciplined Emergency Communications Center, they're not only the only point of contact for the town of Old Sabre 24 hours a day, seven days, other than my cell phone and Carl's cell phone. They're assigned a lot of non-dispatching tasks, right? They watch prisoners. They're the first face anyone sees when you walk into the police department. They're the first voice on the phone. In many cases, a citizen of the town of Old Sabre or a visitor of our fine community, if they have to interact with our agency on a limited basis, they will only interact with a dispatcher. Which means that person can form their opinion of the Old Sabre Department of Police Services on a 30-second phone call. What time does Main Street close for the torchlight parade? How that fall is handled can become the face of our agency, more importantly, the face of our town. And so I install into our folks that they have to be cognizant of that. Our police cars are the billboards for the town of Old Sabre. If our cars look like crap to someone driving through, that may be their impression of the town of Old Sabre. So it is all these little things that maybe you don't So it is all these little things that maybe you don't think about that we do during the day because we appreciate not only what we have, but what we represent. You'll see there for 911 calls, there's four thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight seven-digit calls with the twenty-one thousand, three forty, and they made eight thousand, seventeen calls. You should know that all the alarms, burglar, fire, medical, all come in through a seven-digit line. None of that is 911. A lot of folks search us on the internet now because no one, you know, looks up a phone number. They'll search us, they click the thing, it comes to our seven-digit line, even in a true emergency. So our call-taking protocols are the same for a seven-digit call as they are for a 911 call because we don't know what's on the other side and we must be prepared to help. These are the actual calls for service, things we do on the different shifts. We have two dispatchers that work on every single shift. Uh, and thank you to the Police Commissioner Commission. I think that was, I don't know, maybe four years ago we did that, three years ago we did that? Tremendous improvement in service and quality of life for our midnight dispatcher who could never really go to the bathroom because they had answered the phone. Um, but you see that they, they're handling a lot of things on their ship. Um, and we're very, very proud of what they do. Phone calls by hour is just kind of a neat thing. Apparently Tuesdays between nine and ten is when the phone rings the most. I don't know why, I can't tell you why. Um, but you'll see a breakdown of the shifts there of how many calls on the shift. This should be no surprise to you during the day, there's more calls than there are in the middle of the night, right? If it was opposite, we'd have to ask ourselves, why is everybody up in the hours of eleven PM and seven AM? And why are they calling us? There's our motor vehicle enforcement. And so here on this chart, I break down male and female and resident and non-resident. Uh, you will see that our interaction of resident versus non-resident, there's quite a difference there, right? It's almost a seventy-thirty split. You'll see the ages, but not for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four because our new records management system categorizes them differently. If you look on the left, you see one to seventeen, eighteen to twenty-five, twenty. We do that different now. The system does it different now. So there is the breakdown of our ages. Um, so again, you'll see if my edict is pick on the kids, I'm an ineffective leader because we're not doing it. So when I look at this, apparently if you are fifty-six to sixty-five and a man that doesn't live in town, you are making the most motor vehicle violations. Here's what we do as enforcement. My edict to my staff is the generation of voluntary compliance. We are not out to give tickets. There are certain things that we have zero tolerance for. Drunk or drug driver. Don't do it in Old Sabre. There's a lot of opinions on that. And I don't know why. The only opinion I have, especially in two thousand and twenty-four, so if you've been drinking, call a ride share. Text a friend. These are all things that were not available twenty years ago. You couldn't text anyone and no one was driving around looking to make extra money with their Mazda or Subaru. So I have zero tolerance for that. We also have kind of zero tolerance for unregistered or uninsured vehicles. And we have that because if we allow that vehicle to go after we've stopped it and that vehicle causes an accident or injury, the town of Old Sabre allowed that to happen. That's not good. So here's what we've done. We've tried to come up with a couple of different programs to help people out. One of them is with our license plate readers, primarily on the midnight shift or late evening shift, is we drive through public parking lots and we spot unregistered cars. And we put a little note on the car, says, "Hey, it's the police. We figured out your car was unregistered. Before you drive it, please re-register it. We don't want to give you a ticket." Now that's pretty fair. And we have a sixty-two percent compliance rate in handing those out. Sometimes those are people who owe back taxes and can't re-register their car until they come to the window and pay the town of Old Sabre. So your police officers are not only collecting back taxes, right? In a strange way, but we're also making sure that the cars on the road are registered. Let's take a look at our other things. Out of all of the stops that we made, one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven of them result in a written warrant. Which means those nowhere. It's a gentle reminder to not do what we stopped you doing again. We only gave out two hundred and seventy-five tickets. Only two hundred and seventy-five. It's not a lot. Two hundred and sixty-nine people were just told, "Hey, slow down." Now, when we stop a car, we get their license, we get the registration, we get their insurance. Why do we do that? Because we want to make sure that their license isn't suspended, that their car isn't unregistered, that their insurance isn't lapsed, that they're not wanted. And if it's none of those, my police officers have the discretion to say, "Slow down. See you later." All captured on body cam. Here are some more department statistics. Uh, so criminal arrests, if you want to take a look at that, we're pretty close. Uh, year over year, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, very interesting. We applied for thirty-seven search warrants, eighty-seven arrest warrants, and we served over a hundred arrest warrants. Sometimes we have to serve them for other jurisdictions. The service population coming to our account. Diversity. I, I'm really proud of it. So, um, as you saw last year, I just updated the slide for this year. Two thousand and nine, when I became chief, that's what we look like. Two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, that's what we look like. I firmly believe, I've said it again and again and again over the years, that a hometown local police department has to be representative of the community it serves. If we are not, we are not doing justice for our community. I can tell you that our agency has blossomed because of the professionals that we have of different ethnic and cultural backgrounds. Trowan Moore is sitting in the back of the room. I've never seen a little kid's face light up so much when he's at a holiday open house or he's coming to get his school supplies and he can look up and see himself or herself and the police officer standing there and then engage in a conversation in their native tongue like it's no big deal. That is awesome. It's so awesome that police officers and dispatchers that do not have that cultural background are demanding of me to find them classes for them to learn how to speak Spanish. That speaks to the professionalism and dedication of my fine officers and it speaks to the culture that's present in our agency. It's awesome. Sixty percent of our staff is full-time. Almost forty percent of our staff is per diem. Per diem, police officers come with no long-term liabilities. There's no healthcare, there's no pension. Per diem employees are paid when they work and not paid when they don't. Our three dedicated school resource officers are all per diem employees. None with long-term liabilities, but long-lasting impacts on the special populations that they serve. This past year at Strategic Planning, and you probably noticed it or picked up on it in the budget book. I'm shocked no one submitted it as a possible error. But we no longer refer to our patrol staff with the title of patrolman. Why? We have seven females who serve in that rank. And so while we are all police officers from chief on down, the rank of patrol officer and patrol sergeant now exists to show respect for our very diverse staff that we're really, really proud of. Here's more information about the department. Combined, we have fifty kids that we're responsible for. There are six grandkids in our department family. Over the past year, we saw two marriages. We had two engagements. And while I love this because they're more dedicated than ever to their schedule, two home purchases. And again, it's just to remind you that we're people helping people. So as you're stressed about what to do with the grandkids, go ahead. Some of our staff has the same stress. When we go to work, we have to separate ourselves from this life to our professional life. Sometimes that's very hard to do. I remember losing my grandmother and going on my first medical CPR-related emergency right after that. That was tough for me. I didn't go to medical calls in Old Sabre since I was fifteen. That was tough. And so we have to remember that we are people helping people and that we have to make sure that they are not only physically safe at the end of their shift, but emotionally well before they return to those valuable folks. Because as I have learned, as Heather and Kendall and Kaden have taught me, the most important thing in the world is family. And I want my staff to know that too. Traffic count data, a couple of quick things. So, number one, you can go on to the state DOT website now, click on this link, which again I'll provide for you and your supplemental materials, and you can do your own traffic count data. You can click on Old Sabre, can click on dots, and look at intersections and look at track. It's all for the taking now. So all the slides that I do are no longer as impressive because you can do it yourself. Um, arrest by month, here's our arrest by month breakdown. So you know, you ask the average person, "What's the busiest month for arrests in Old Sabre?" Oh, it's gotta be July and August. The answer year over year over year is that's just not correct. So October and December seem to be the months. This year, a couple of years ago, it was April. There's really no rhyme or reason to it. Okay? So while we may swell in the summer, we all know that traffic flow in Old Sabre is much different in the summer months than it is right now. It impacts our agency not the way that you would think it does. When I first became a police officer, this month, tumbleweed blowing down Main Street. There wasn't a thing going on. And that is not what we have seen. Here's another interesting factor. Our most critical calls for the last eight years have happened after Labor Day. I don't know why. It's just what the data shows. We also have, as I mentioned before, this interactive activity dashboard. You can go to the police department's website, click on interactive, interactive activity dashboard, and you can search our stats. There are some things we don't tell you. We don't tell you where the address of the last domestic violence investigation was. We don't tell you where the address of the last medical emergency was, right? Those are personal and private. But you can go through all of our call types. You can look at a heat map, you can do your own stats, you can do things year over year. There's some very interesting things there, like how long police officers uh, during the last year, how many hours and minutes they've been working on reports or how many hours and minutes they've been on pause for service. It is all there for you to do. Nothing hidden, except the stuff that obviously we must redact. And I think that this was a great step forward a couple of years ago. Yeah, last year was our first year of this. Here's my traffic count data. Um, so the last time that there's data on the state DOT website is, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. Seems like they do it every like four to five years unless there's going to be some sort of significant, uh, traffic impact. Well, there's that, a couple more traffic data things, but again, you can, um, you know, look that up yourself and obviously this will be in the presentation for you to review. Uh, there's the entrances to our town. So these are all the gateways. Our hotels and motels, we just looked at, you know, what are our calls for service? So we went to a hotel or motel two hundred and twenty-eight times, um, last year. But we also have to respect whether zoning knows or not, that there are people who are living, this is their house, this is what they can afford, and this is where they've made a home for their families. And so when we go to a hotel or motel room, it doesn't necessarily have to be someone who's visiting or on vacation. And we have to value that as service providers. Okay? If this is all someone can afford, then this is where their family home is. There's calls for service at, um, our bigger box stores. Normally, and maybe some of you are hoping for this, and I have to let you down, normally we put up the big box stores, their customer counts, how much money is coming through the door, what they rank, and they used to want to give us this information. That is no longer the case. This is considered privileged information, much to my chagrin, because I loved it because it was a great example of the presence of a service population. But no longer will Stop &amp; Shop give us our number, their numbers or Walmart. Uh, Home Goods actually didn't give us their numbers. I was, I was interested in that just based on the amount of times Heather goes there. Um, so they're doing well and hopefully they send a card. Um, but there are, they just don't want to release the data. And I think that might be because how public it's become, right? Presentation like this on the internet and how many competitors are coming into the area now. Right? We're no longer a one grocery store down. You know, soon we're going to be a three grocery store down. Um, there's our retail demographics and their calls for service for the various banks in town. Uh, keep in mind, we have a hundred plus food establishments. It's about four or five of them that are seasonal. And so, you know, I tell you those things because obviously the citizens of the town of Old Sabre are not going out to eat every single night. Right? And so that's another representation or another example of a service population, people coming into town, uh, to do that. Every year I do my staffing formula for you. Um, so I will take you quickly through the next couple of slides. If someone has a more in-depth question on it, I know everyone has seen this before. Um, so I don't want to spend too much time on it. Um, so we use the, the workload approach. And I'll let me go through that. So per capita approach means you should have X number of cops per people. One cop for every ten thousand people. I mean, so Old Sabre should have one point three cops. Call it a day. We know that's not going to work. The minimum staffing approach, we have minimum staffing in our contract, but that is not how we budget. It contributes to our budget. Our minimum staffing in our police officer contract is one supervisor, a sergeant, and two patrol officers. I almost said patrolman, I'm trying to get better at that. One patrol sergeant and two patrol officers for our dispatchers, as we just went over, two dispatchers. So that does contribute, but that's not how we dictate staffing. Authorized level approach, you're supposed to have twenty-five cops. And so you have twenty-five cops. That doesn't really work anymore either. Coverage-based approach, it's usually done by square miles. One law enforcement officer for X number of square miles, usually done more in a county form of, of government. And then the workload-based approach. I like and choose the work-based load approach because it is transparent. Somebody can ask me a question about it. Prove it. And I can. And I think that's important when it comes to police officer staffing. So here's various steps in the staffing formula. The first step is you have to determine the number of complaints or incidents that were received by the police agency. And so the total number of incidents, an incident is anything. It's directing traffic, a fatal car accident, a CPR, the lady with the toilet. Everything is one incident or one call for service. It's not weighted. It doesn't have value other than it's a call for service or an incident. Then we scrub those because we say, "Listen, we can't use every time we feed the prisoner, which must be documented, towards our staffing formula. It's just not proper." And so there were twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight incidents that did not meet the definition in that first paragraph. And so the total complaints or incidents that we use in our calculation from twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-two events to eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen events. Then there's some math, right? So we multiply the total complaints or incidents by point seven five or forty-five minutes. And that's because in the law enforcement profession, it is generally accepted that forty-five minutes is the average time necessary to handle a complaint or an incident. Some of them take days. Some of them take five minutes. This is just the national formula in the average. Remember that I can drill down to how long a police officer is doing this. to how long a police officer is doing this specific task. I presented that in previous years to the Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, and the Police Commission. Not gonna bore you with that again tonight. So anyways, that gives us a number, 6,610.5. Then we multiply by three to add a buffer factor and time for preventative patrol. General experience has showed about one-third of a police officer's time should be spent handling requests for services. So one-third of our time is going to calls. One-third of our time is reporting on those calls. And one-third of our time should be general proactive patrol. General proactive patrol is us driving through your neighborhood with the cruise lights on. It's us on group one, providing omnipresence, hopefully deterring a potential criminal actor from wanting to do anything in Old Saver and moving on. Multiplied by three makes up all our unknowns. Again, it gives us a number, 19,831.5. Then we divide that product by 2,920. That's the number of hours necessary to staff one basic police officer patrol unit for a year. And we come out with a figure. Then we have to figure out when our police officers are not available, right? So we talked about the cop wanting to take his or her family to Disney. Okay, that means they don't work seven days a week. I, I've had many conversations over the years with people who just don't understand. And it's okay because they don't live it. 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 day a year staffing. Right? You tell them you have to have three cops on each shift. There's three shifts a day. They come back and say that all you need is nine people. But okay, no, because they get days off and they get vacation time and they get sick and maybe they get deployed, right? So that's why it takes more than the exact number. So how we do that in the staffing formula, as we've done for years now, is we take a look at their non-available patrol time. And obviously, we have to generalize this, right? Their days off, their meal breaks, what they get, their sick time, bereavement, general FMLA over history, professional development time, et cetera, et cetera. And we come out with a calculation. What's most important to remember about non-available patrol time is this. A less tenured staff has increased availability. Why is that? They have less personal leave time. Less time with the company. Less vacations. More time with the company. More vacation. When you have more vacation, you become less available. One of the things the town of Old Saver chose to do during the last contractual negotiation process was listen to our police officers who asked for a better work-life balance. Specifically, they said, you're currently paying us in a check for the holidays that other people, including other members of our own union, receive as floating vacation days. And so the town chose to grant their request, not immediately, but one fiscal year out, so there was no negative impact to our current budget. But beginning July 1, 2025, that they would be allotted more floating personal leave days rather than just being compensated. What that has done for a one-year period to our staffing formula is that has taken a less tenured person and given them more personal leave time. So that'll be a one-year outlier, this transition. So step five, again, this is everything I just explained. We looked at the 42 schedule. And this determines that we need 14.538 patrol officers. This does not include supervisors. It does not include executive staff. And it does not include specialized personnel, such as our accreditation or professional standards coordinator or our detectives. So here's the formula, very, very simple. Simplified, here are the numbers. And again, the 15.218. Here's how it stacks up the previous years. So earlier on, 2018, that number was at 17.275. It has trended down, and now we're at 15.218. I'm here to tell you, and my budget proposal represents, we have the staff that we need. We just had to go through this rebuilding. We did. And we're there. We're back. And so very soon, Chairman of the Police Commission is gonna proctor the sergeant's exam in the next week or so. We're gonna promote people to fill our sergeant's vacancies. You'll see that in the budget request. The Police Commission has authorized a structure change to add some middle management personnel. We're gonna see those promotions happen within that 175-day timeframe. And we're gonna fill the remaining one or two, depending on how the promotions go. Law enforcement officer positions. This is all great news. From a guy who has watched this at the helm since 2009, I lovingly call this OSPD 2.0. I'm really excited about the talent we have in our department. Here's the current salary structure for fiscal year 26. Here's our staff status. So currently, we have three open full-time law enforcement officer positions. And there are things that may happen with those. And so we have a sergeant promotional process, patrol sergeant promotional process going on that has four applicants that are about to take their written exam. And depending on where they are, depends on how we would bridge that gap or backfill positions. Out of our nine full-time dispatchers, we currently have one open slot. We have a memorandum of understanding with our dispatch union. If you remember, years ago, we combined records and dispatch and saved a whole lot of money. We've actually seen a 10,000, continuous $10,000 savings year over year with that. That ninth open position is the one that we would dedicate to records. That would help backfill shifts, which helps reduce that budget, you know, 10 grand year over year. Right now, we're paying a stipend to one employee to get that work done. And we'll be reviewing during contract negotiations, what will happen with that one position, whether we're filling it, doing something different. That'll be up to negotiations, or we may just choose to fill it. Clerical positions, I have one, there's one full-time clerical position in this entire agency. Jennifer DiMatto is my executive assistant. She sits 10 feet outside of my office. She literally hears everything and anything that's going on. Things she can hear through the door. She won't tell me that. But she did an incredible amount of work on this budget, and I appreciate that. Others in the agency, Captain Barry made an appearance just to edit my work, so I have to talk to him about my misspellings that he didn't pick up. But I appreciate their, their hard work and dedication. They know Jen really knows how important this is to me. This presentation, the book, the discussion is extremely important. We have one per diem, staff member that just works on permitting. And custodial, we have one full-time custodian for 30 hours. We have a contractual cleaning crew that comes in. Remember, there was like rug cleaning in the title, and there's like six years ago, you guys thought I was cleaning the rugs once a week. It's just the name of his business. So we were the first agency in town to have a hybrid, and I appreciate Carl allowing us to do that, union staff and private contractor. And that's, that's turned out to be a true success. And then we have one open 10-hour position. The person that was in that just got promoted to be a new dispatcher. So we're really, really proud of him, but we'll be looking to backfill that, that 10-hour position, which is important on the weekends. There's something called zero status that we keep track of. Zero status means no cops available. Now, no cops available can mean a variety of things. Three cops are at a house because it's a critical incident, right? So last night, three police officers and myself were at this hotel trying to figure out where this guy possibly with a gun. We were at zero status. For the first time in a long time, we couldn't even handle a law enforcement call. We actually called the troop and they were actually available to come into town and handle that call for us. That is extremely rare. Our fire department serves as our supplemental EMS first responder. So there are times during the year where I contact Chief Johnson and say, I need you to take over that duty. It could be because we're at a critical incident, we're all tied up doing something, we're doing something very sensitive, and we just can't, we don't have the personnel to respond to that, and they do that every time. So last night during that critical incident, we had the troop coming to town and we had the fire department go to two different medical versions. So zero status is a thing. Now, you look at these things, you're like, wow, in the day shift in the last year, they went into zero status 495 times. That is not alarming to me. It's not. I hope that everyone in this room knows that I know what's going on in the police department and what services and what we're providing them to the town. And so if there is no one available to do proactive patrol, but everyone's doing police work, and that doesn't last for a really long time, we're just doing our job. There are times when all three police officers are gonna be busy. Just that simple. None are available to go to a call. That's how the computer logs in. If there's a true priority call that comes in, that police officer that may not be unavailable because they're on a lower level, perhaps a quality of lifetime, but my neighbor blew his leaves into my yard. Okay. We really don't want to be here, but you called us, so we're here to talk about your leaves. Now a difficulty breathing call. Obviously, that police officer goes from one unavailable status to another one because he or she is prioritizing that call for service. We do that internally for dispatch software, and obviously our patrol sergeants monitor that. I can tell you though, that what this says to me is, don't be alarmed. It also says to me, you probably are on the cusp of having the right amount of resources. Right? Like, we're right there. We're good. One, one way or the other, probably not. Here's what's interesting. So our police officers by contract are allowed a 45-minute meal break. Midnight shift, day shift, evening shift. Doesn't matter. If you're a midnight shift employee, 2:00 AM is lunch. It just is, right? And for some of you, that might, why would they eat in the middle of the night? Well, okay, because that's their work week. That's their work day, right? So it's different. 65% of the time, our cops are not getting their break because they're busy. That bothers me a little bit. Now, we have, I told you right now in my introduction, OSPD 2.0, we have a fantastic staff. No one is complaining about this. No one. And to me, that shows their dedication. But what I don't want to do is I don't want that number to keep growing. And I don't want us to not take that into consideration. And so this is important to me for internal employee morale, for health and wellness, and to make sure our officers know that they're valued. So how do I combat this? Well, I tell my sergeants in leadership team meetings, hey, if you wanna have like a group meal, because they're not allowed to eat together, because you know, someone's gotta be out being a cop doing a thing. If you wanna have a group meal, let me know. I'll say yes. All you guys can be in the station together at once, have a group meal. Won't be 45 minutes, be quicker than that, but you'll feel valued. You'll have a little quick downtime if the calls for service allow it. We are never off. So there's no such thing as, I'll be on my break and a call comes in and I'm like, no, no, dispatch, clearly you're confused. I'm on my break. That doesn't happen in our law. And so I just have to make sure that I'm careful with this, but I applaud our staff for understanding that this is part of their job. Okay, now, we have a young agency, so there are only three people that can retire in the next five years. Myself and Master Sergeant DiMarco. Apparently, we could have retired in 2021. So we missed that, so we're gonna stay. Sergeant Walsh in the back of the room, he can leave January of 2027. After that, the next person can't go until 2035, then 2037, and then we get into the 40s. I did a, I made a mistake as a leader over the past nine, 10 months, where I overly spoke at public meetings about retiring, if you don't like me, buy me out. And that had a negative effect on my staff. And so some have individually come to me and said, chief, stop doing that. No one here, I'm sure there's some people inside the building that like, you know, leave, but very large majority does not. And they say, can you stop saying that? I will, but looking at this, I am not staying to 2048. So we have a very young staff, but this is what makes it exciting. If the town of Old Saver does what they need to do, these 12 people that at the end of next budget year that have less than five years on will be here for a very long time. It's up to all of us in this room to nurture this employment. It really is. How we talk, what we say, how we represent ourselves at public meetings, how we fund, how we support, all of that goes into this retention. I'd love to see this crew stay. I'd like to get cards. Maybe be invited back for promotional ceremonies in 2042. Probably would have came, or Heather leading this around. But this is cool stuff. And so I want us to embrace this. Three parts to our budgets, general expenditures, field services, support services, and then obviously marine patrol. Let me go through our requests real quick. There is, we'll get to kind of a hybrid on this in a second, but in our general expenditures, there's really no changes. Except for this breaking news in an email Friday, maybe Friday, from Finance Director Leanne Taladino. She generally never sends me good information like this during budget season, so I was really happy about it. Hi, chief. That's how I knew it was gonna be good. Hi, chief. The workman's comp for your department for fiscal year 26 will be $93,000 and not $120,000. Hey, gang, that's cool. But I wasn't reprinting all of the books. So, John, here it is. You see it? $27,000 in free cash flow, your favorite phrase. That's right. So there's a $27,000 delta. The Police Commission has a couple of decisions to make during their meetings. They could either reduce the existing budget by $27,000. That would change our ass to $74,688 year over year, or 1.34% increase. What I am going to ask the Police Commission to do is I'm going to ask them to take $10,000 of that $27,000 delta and apply it to our ever-source line. We are traditionally over-budget in electricity year over year. However, because we've been in a rebuilding format, there have been funds to cover that. I anticipate in those next 175 days that we're not going to have that delta. And that it would be wise to properly fund our ever-source line. That will be one of my recommendations to the Police Commission to consider. With the remaining $17,000, I think, because we know we're going to be in contract negotiations, that that should be parked somewhere, perhaps outside of the police budget, reducing our budget by $17,000, but available to add back in during the budget process if the dispatcher contract settles and requires additional funding. None of us know that in this room. So I think that that's a healthy way to consider it. Police Commissioners, that'll be my recommendation, which obviously we'll be talking a little bit more about either later tonight or Thursday. Here's fuel. The First Election has entered into a contractual agreement with East River Energy. Thank you, sir. I know we talk about oil and gas more than the average First Election in department head probably. But he has committed $39,761.24 to a pre-buy of 15,000 gallons. You can see our history of used gallons on the board and where we are to date. And so our budget request in this line item is 40 grand, pretty much covered by the pre-buy. And that's what we owe, obviously, on July 15th. Now, it is no secret to anyone that our vehicle maintenance line item that you'll see in a little bit and our fuel line item exceeds our budgeted numbers. And then at the end of the year, the Finance Director and the First Election come to you and ask to take funds that we have collected for vehicle usage through our private duty program and re-infuse just the amount of dollars that is needed to cover those line items that cancel out, to make it budget neutral, and then the rest goes into surplus. George, one of the, one of your very great questions was simply, what if you don't have a lot of private duty jobs? How, how are you gonna fund it? And so I responded to George late last night, it was last night, right? Late last night? And it's never been that case. And so And so it is a safe gamble. Remember in the beginning, I talked about some of the things we don't fully fund, but we're doing it on historical experience. We believe that we're going to be in a position year over year, as we have been year over year for more than five years. I think we've been doing it five, six years now, that that has worked. And so I believe we are where we should be budget-wise. I'm against overtaxing or overburdening the taxpayer to try to meet a fiscal liability that we know we've met year over year for five or six years, especially with the monthly oversight that we have. So if we're not seeing that private duty work and we're not collecting those fees, the Police Commission's gonna know about it, or Finance, or Selectman. Most importantly, Leanne's gonna know about it and we're gonna be able to take care of that before fiscal year. Our operating budget. So those are the increases. All I did was take all the different line items for field services and put them in one slide and how much they increased or decreased. And look, when I told you that we're following the formulas, we are, and that's why you might see like, you know, different numbers, like special assignment went up eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Why didn't it just go up a thousand? Because that's not what it was in the formula and that's not transparent. So we're budgeting to those formulas that mean no work. You will see there the canine feeding and grooming line item. You'll see there representative of my decision to eliminate one canine physician at a savings of ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Understanding step raises. So step raises are a little bit different now, right? Here's kind of a summary of how many people are moving from one step to the other. This is just the police officer screen. So the top line are all our patrol officers and then the bottom line are our patrol sergeants. So our step raises, our fiscal liability for step raises is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. Well, how come the budget isn't going up that much? Because there's been savings otherwise. Here's what's different. The contractual language that we have now present in our police officer contract does not require a step increase every year. Instead, and for additional compensation through the negotiation period, some people remain at the same step year over year and just receive a general wage increase in accordance with the collective bargaining unit. And so if there is anyone here that would like a copy of the police officer or the dispatcher contract, let me know and I'll be more than happy to like kind of show you this area, which might allow you to understand it a little bit better. Additionally, we have some positions that make a specific amount over a specific position. So one right here says, patrolman appointed as a detective first class shall earn an additional five thousand dollars. It's not a percent increase. It's just a specific amount. Take a look at the bottom, the Master Sergeant. The Master Sergeant doesn't advance to step two after being at step one for four years. So this is a change in step raise philosophy for us. But it's both good for the personnel and good for the town. There's the operating budget for support services. Again, you see like dispatch special assignment went down sixteen bucks. A lot of these categories, personnel categories for our support division, went down because we hired newer staff. So still in their contract, less tenured, less time, less salary. And that's the result from the formula. Our capital budget. We have, and I know Leanne's gonna, okay. Leanne's gonna talk about that, I think, later, probably not tonight, different time, about how the capital budget, when she presents that to you. But currently in our capital budget, we have ten thousand dollars for information technology support during the year, consumables. Ninety thousand dollars for the vehicle replacement. That, we're no longer paying our loan, if you will, but that is recommended that it's gonna be placed in kind of an off-budget account, almost like the old-fashioned sinking fund for fleet. And then I always have this on there at some point. Sergeant Walsh there, who runs our Marine Division, is gonna come to me and say, we need boat engines. And I'm gonna say, you should come to the meeting with me to talk about both things, because I'm not good at that. But that will more than likely be a request that comes out of the capital not reoccurring account at some point when that needs to happen. Here's our fleet. I'm sorry, that's small. I will get you, again, the slides, so you can see the mileage and the hours. We're using Chevy Tavos, Chevy Chevrolet. Says thirty idle hours is equal to one mile. So there is our fleet, what their assignment is, where they are, and the mileage on that. At some point, we are gonna have to talk about flipping the fleet again. And we're going to talk about that not because our primary fleet really needs to flip. Our secondary fleet is in need of help. So in our department strategic planning session, my personnel sent to me, chief, these secondary cars are hurting. The Goodwin School SRO came and gave me a piece of her roof a month ago. I said, oh, that can't be good. The community service officer has so much rot in the car door, you can stick your hand right through. These are things that we need to address. And so you'll see shortly, one of my executive goals is to present options and a program theory to the Police Commission for their consideration. So we need to do those things. Our private duty fleet, our support vehicles, they are paid for exclusively out of the off-budget private duty account. So none of those vehicles on the bottom, those old Ford Explorers, none of them are being paid for by tax dollars. Their oil changes, the overheating radiator, alternator that goes, it's all being paid by off-budget funds that are generated by billing private contractors for our work. This is now the third year in a row that we've done this and this works magically. There's our Marine Patrol request. We are asking for an additional nine hundred and fifty dollars. Again, that's just, it's formula-based, right? So the non-union employee general wage increase for the town of Old Sabre this year is three percent. So if you're not in a union, you get a three percent general wage increase, which means our Marine operators got a three percent increase. And the average of the police officer salaries are just the averages that you saw on the regular operating budget.
So chief, I'm sorry. Sorry, Joe, but I have kids at home and like, I'm fine being here until ten o'clock at night, but just what are we, like, how many more slides do we have?
Eight, ten?
Eight, ten, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are welcome.
No, I'm not rushing.
So on the back of your book is a chart. And that chart represents all the changes in the budget year over year. So it's a good summary chart. The chart can get you a little turned sideways if you try to go back and figure last year versus this year and two years ago. This is simply very basic math. What was the change year over year from the approved twenty-five budget to the proposed twenty-six budget? And then at the end, everyone on this distribution list will receive, after the Police Commission endorses a budget over the next two weeks, everyone will receive an updated book. We used to print two, that was silly, so I don't do that anymore. So once the Police Commission endorses a budget, becomes their budget. See, tonight, I pass it on to them, becomes their budget. And then everyone will receive a book along with a presentation and so maybe some other statistics that will come up with it that you might find interesting. So there's our requests. Again, one oh one, six eighty-eight, depending on what we do with that workman's comp, twenty-seven thousand dollar delta or a percentage increase of one point eight two percent. And so what I thought I would do is pause here before I get to my executive goals to see, number one, if there's questions on the budget. Mr. Chairman, if you think that's more appropriate now? And then people can decide if they would like to stay for the executive goals or if that's just the Police Commission.
I had hoped that the questions on the budget from the Police Commission would occur at our meeting on the budget on Thursday.
Is Leanne or are we even here? Because I have questions for them.
Does anyone else have any questions? Brad?
Would you be able to introduce your officers on the back?
Oh, sure. Let me have Sergeant Walsh do that. It's his ship.
As you know, I'm Sergeant Walsh. This is Patrolman Moore. He's one of our bilingual officers. A great resource, what we've brought up through Mr. Fortunate, the contractor. They now get a stipend for being bilingual because it's such a widely-used tool. So they get rewarded for that a little bit. Patrolman Charles Porter, Harry. And then Patrolman Henry is one of our newer officers.
They actually asked them to come here. I didn't tell them to go? That's your shock, right? Sure. That's gonna be, oh, yeah, sure. Good to have you. Yes?
One other question is, I will please send you for the Marine boat. You plan on looking for that this year?
So we, Chief, I talked about a little bit. You know, just maintenance is starting to become a little bit more cumbersome, some bigger repairs. So, you know, at some point, we're gonna look at the numbers and decide when the appropriate time to run them is. You know, hopefully, there's not a catastrophic failure. In that meantime, there's a little bit of a leeway to get them.
Is that two hundred and thirty?
Does that two hundred?
And then how many hours are on?
Twenty-two hundred.
So the flipping of fleet. Does that come out of? I'm sorry, remind me, is that, because I was in when we like originally flipped it. So does that come out of the police budget? What does that come out of? And did we have to prepare for that right now or?
So no, so that is not part of this project proposal. The amount of money that goes towards the loan payment, saying that right? It comes out of the capital budget.
Oh, we're gonna, but yeah, but it's, well, I thought.
We're gonna do something different, maybe.
We might. I mean, it could be part of the police budget. And if we're not funding vehicles, it can just go off-budget to pay for vehicles. But the operational request should probably include that as part of the capital budget.
Yeah, so at this point, we're not, we're not doing that. I'm not ready to do that. But as everyone knows, by looking at all the great spreadsheets that we have, we still have funds. Remember, we got more for our older police cars than we expected. And those funds are also sitting in an off-budget account. If we don't purchase vehicles this next year, then the ninety thousand dollars in theory would go on top of that and we would start having seed money to do these projects.
So when you say this next year, you mean twenty-five? Or do you mean twenty-six?
So I don't know. So one of my executive goals is going to be to study our fleet and come to the Commission with a proposal and then have a collaborative discussion on what we feel together would be best.
Okay, because I personally am not comfortable passing any budget that doesn't include the fleet or whatever, if it's gonna be twenty-five, if that makes sense. So, yeah.
So the ninety thousand dollars for the fleet is in there. We just don't know.
Okay.
We just don't know at this point if that'll be done in fiscal year twenty-six, because we have not thoroughly examined that. But there will be funds in this budget that could go towards that. If we choose to do that, if we don't, that'll sit in an off-budget.
And I, I think like going over the specifics of flipping the fleet, like how many cars does that include? Like, I think that's a conversation.
I think the Commission will focus on that rather than take up everybody's time here.
So all I'll say to the end of that is, you are correct. And that would be part of my proposal, as it has been for the last three times that we did this. Trust me, it would be very thoughtful.
So I have a procedural question here. And so it's been along me so far and I certainly don't want to prolong this. I have a series of questions. And so I need to basically address it to the chair or finance, the chair to the board of commission. So you sort of understand the procedural part. So right now, your presentation gives to the Police Commission, the way you presented, you will go to the Police Commission as their budget, which, which case you will have a conversation and discussion. At that point, it becomes the Police Commission's budget that we present to the Board of Finance.
It's my first one. The first one.
But at some point, if you get the board of finance, my first question then is, would there have been, did it have been a chance to ask questions at that point?
Oh, my gosh, yes. Bruce will have me, absolutely.
I would, the budget is being presented. I don't think there's any. You certainly have the opportunity now, if you have questions.
No, apparently you don't.
That's, I mean, for input for the Police Commission now, or you don't think that's?
But what we did last year is we, we didn't do it like this. And then we went and discussed it and then I sat and the chief came in and you guys got your quiz. And that's when the Board of Finance had their chance to ask their question.
Last year was different. There was no joint presentation because I had COVID.
That's what I just said.
The year before, we did it exactly like this.
Right. So what I'm saying is, last year, after not having a presentation, we discussed it with the Police Commission and then there was a separate meeting with the Board of Finance and you were there and you sat over here. And that's when they asked their question. Like, to me, I thought tonight was just a presentation of this and we.
I'm good either way.
I just have a housekeeping question.
We have, we have two meetings scheduled. To understand, yes.
So let me, can I just address George very quickly? If you have questions and if tonight is not the night, feel free to come see me on Sweet and Icy with Lemon is my favorite. Love to go over the budget with you. The charter dictates the process, right? So they have until the fifteenth. Then it goes to Carl. Carl's gotta do something with his board. March first is gonna go to you, right? That's the, that's the process. But I have, as I said in the beginning, no issue speaking to anyone sitting around this large U about the budget at any time.
Then if I may, then if I can just ask two very general questions, just so I can understand as I digest the budget separately. So one is relates to how vacations, holidays, there are actually three, three different line items and how that works. And I just need to sort of understand that. So very naive, the way where I work, how I, I work, because I get paid a salary. I have vacation days. When I take a vacation day, I still get paid. I'm not so sure that's how it works here. And so, and so the three line items, essentially, how, how does the, how does vacation day coverage, holiday replacement and holiday payout, which no longer exists in, with this year twenty-six, how do two components work?
Yeah, so let me give you a quick fifty thousand foot answer. And if that doesn't work, let's, let's go offline. And so, yes, I have a job, I can take vacation days and I get paid when I'm on vacation. What you see in the budget is not paying that employee who's on vacation while they're on vacation. You're seeing, as you mentioned, the vacation replacement. So we have to backfill that employee, right? So imagine your job, when you take a vacation day, they can't work without you. They have to put someone in your seat at your job while you're away. Those vacation replacement funds pay that person to be there, okay? The second thing that you asked about, which was great, we picked up on it and I, I obviously didn't properly communicate it. We are no longer, as of July one, twenty twenty-five, paying our employees for their holidays. And so it used to be, there's thirteen, let's just say, there's thirteen holidays, fourteen holidays, I think they get. We used to, in the contract, if you were a very tenured person, you got those thirteen holidays as floating vacation days on top of whatever your vacation allotment was. Some of the employees, the newer employees, did not get those holidays as floating vacation days. We wrote them a check. Half in December, half in June. Through the negotiation process, they said, hey, listen, work-life balance. We no longer want a check. Money is not what we're looking for. It's time off. And the town agreed to take those employees that were getting a check for their thirteen holidays and allowing them to now use them as floating vacation days, which is why that one line item disappeared, holiday payout, because we're no longer paying out for holidays. And then those two budget lines, vacation replacement and holiday replacement, get combined. The reason why we separate them is so it's more transparent. And when you're reading the contract, you can match up contractual language with fiscal liability.
George? And again, just a very short question. So, so I appreciate the way you calculated how many officers you need, not counting supervisors and executive person and so on. And you came up with a number of fifteen point something. I don't believe you. Next one point, let you go to sixteen.
So we, we, we don't want to be chopped up. So we're into that.
And so right now, in your current budget for fiscal year twenty-six, you actually have twenty. And so right now, in your current budget for fiscal year twenty-six, you actually have twenty sixteen names, real names assigned. And so based on your presentation, you have a full department. You also have additional three officers in the bottom, which right now is labeled as officer one, two, and three. And also your presentation has three open positions. I need to understand what that means.
Sure, absolutely. So would you mind going to the budget? Do you have the booklet in front of you or the project? Well, let me go to the booklet to help me explain. Okay, thank you. So if everyone that has their sheet goes to page three, on your police officer salary, you will see the salaries of, A, all full-time sworn law enforcement officers and the three per diem school resource officers. And two line items that are the anticipated or known delta for the promotions that will ninety-nine point nine percent happen in the next hundred and seventy-five days. And so as you look at this chart, we know that in Old Saver, we have twenty-five full-time sworn law enforcement officers. This does not equal twenty-five. It equals twenty-eight because then here are the three school resource officers, which are per diem. But we know what their salaries are going to be for the school year. And that's why I include them in this category. So it can be transparent and seen. At the very bottom of the page, there are three openings. Patrol Officer twenty-three, we call it, Patrol Officer twenty-four, and Patrol Officer twenty-five. We valued those open positions, two of which would be at step one, and one of which would be a more tenured person, maybe a lateral transfer. There is a possibility during the promotional process that a current per diem officer could be selected by the police commission to be a full-time patrol sergeant. That would consume one of those lines, leaving only two vacant positions. The police commission has been clear with me to maintain one open position for a potential second-in-command spot, which would leave me with only one position to fill. If that per diem patrol officer, who is in the promotional process for sergeant, does not get selected by the police commission, then we would have two open, full-time law enforcement vacancies that will be filled within the next hundred and seventy-five days. But I cannot do that until this promotional process is finished because I can't wind up with too many. So this is just a fluid situation that will take care of itself in the next hundred and seventy-five days, actually a lot sooner than that. But this is the only way I could present this on December twenty-fourth, when I was required to give it to the police. So by the time George gets to you, March one, in a formal thing, you'll see names in those boxes.
Wait, which is a fault, they, they, remind us, saying it quick, they, they, at the end, when it all settles down, there'll be three less police officers. No, but three more, but there'll be three more sergeants.
So the commission may promote two and or three. We're not sure yet, right? Because of the process and I don't want to speculate in public.
But that's, but they'll be promoted.
But they'll be promoted. We're not, I think this is what you're looking for. We're not adding positions. Trouble always make sure I say that. So there you go. We're not adding positions.
So this is a general question. SROs. I could have made this up in the head, okay? But I thought SROs were classified under something different, like they weren't per diem, they are, no?
So they're per diem police officers. They only get paid when they work.
Right.
They're part of the bargaining unit. They're part of the, they're part of the union. That may be what you're thinking of. So about two years ago, they went from non-union people to being represented by the bargaining unit.
Right, so they're, I mean, I know that they do other work outside of SROs. So what exactly classified?
That gets paid out of the other personnel patterns, which are not attributed to a specific person.
Okay. I just think I need to study that.
So as an example,
Yeah.
Any officer, whether they're per diem or full-time, if they backfill somebody who called out sick, they get compensated from the sick and injured replacement line item, where there are no names, just funded. If they backfill someone who's on vacation, my Disney example, they would get backfilled out of that vacation replacement line.
Okay, but like, what if they work the Main Street festival? How do they get paid?
Yeah, so they get paid for that out of the extra personnel line item. So all of our supplemental personnel items have descriptions associated with it. And that's how we, that's how we classify stuff. So I drive the accounting department nuts, I think, with all of my different things. Some towns, by the way, have salary overtime. Very simple. I don't think that's transparent. I like building cost centers. I haven't been able to for the last couple of years because we haven't been up to staff. But when we were up to staff, you could build cost centers. It was very, very simple during the budget process to say, okay, how much was high school graduation to direct travel? How much was now celebrate Sabre? Right? And those are, those are cool things to do. And so by separating that amount by supplemental categories, we're able to be more transparent and accurate with our budget.
Okay, there you go.
Well, I have a housekeeping question for Carl or Lee. And January fifteenth, according to the town charter, is absolute last date, police commission make decision. And when, what's board's selectance date?
Let's see again, Renee.
What is the board's selectance deadline? March first. And then what is the board of finance?
Well, our review period is from January fifteenth to February fifteenth.
Okay.
And then in theory, delivery to the board of finance, March one. And the board of ed is by March first. So there's a, for some reason, board of selectmen is February fifteen, board of ed is March first, March versus, I recall, the charter.
Then Renee, if you're asking about board of finance, then the board of finance has been the month of March.
No, if I understand correctly, you built in, you provided us with a few hundred and seventy-five day in advance potential change that will occur. And one of those would be promotions among those. And so you budgeted for that on page three at the bottom, anticipating that those will be additional costs. With the dispatchers on, on the page twenty-two here, your salary is placed in the twenty-five, twenty-six line item. Are you indicating to us that based on the contract negotiations, those salaries could change?
Well, Scott, I'd never do that by myself. So in consultation with the first selectman and the finance director, the general wage increase that was provided there came from them.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, we've done that a whole bunch of different ways through the years. We put a, like a, a delta of money into an off-budget account. We put just a general packet there. And the last couple of times, we, we've shown it. The man's a good negotiator. He's doing, he knows the dispatcher would see this. And it was successful with the police officers. But yes, that, that was anticipated general wage increase from them.
And what, what do you say? Two percent?
Two.
Two.
But any answer to your question, it could change.
Yeah, which is why I'm saying that that seventeen thousand dollars that's left from the workers' compensation, maybe that should go somewhere. I'm not saying keep it in the police budget, but go somewhere to be used if it has to be used. And if not, it can fall to the bottom line of the municipal budget. So what's unique with, like, the police budget, if we were building something for five point five million dollars, someone around this table should, would say, man, we should have a contingency, right? We don't do that with the largest department. There is no contingency here. In fact, many of our line items, we knowingly underfund based on historical experience. I'm not complaining. I'm just saying that we go into every year as a public safety agency that has the most human resources, not knowing anything and with no contingency. But we have you to come back to if we need that.
Yes, two quick questions. Just a clarification. I know you had it on a slide. I think I just missed it. But with cutting the K nine unit, that savings is?
Ten thousand, two hundred?
Right, but is that, we're not cutting up position?
No.
That is the delta between a K nine level position and a, an entry level.
Correct. It's almost their site.
Great. And then, thank you. And then there, you can't have the budget.
And there's no dog, we're laying off. There's just no dog in this. Should say that to the public.
Can't have a budget conversation without calls per service question. So in, and I know that we have the new tracking system. So one of the numbers that jumped out was medical assists seems to be at a higher sustained number over the last three years. Is that because of the way that the new software tracks that? Or is that a function of our service population? Is that just random?
I think that's just random. I think that we're seeing, like a statement, I regret here, but I think that we're seeing a population in town, a resident population, that may have more of a need for medical services. So we have an aging population in Old Saver, right? So if you go to an economic development, we're not seeing tons of families with young kids moving to town. You see that in the board of education budget. And so when you have an aging population, that population is going to need emergency medical services more than, in theory, a younger population. That's my, that's my guess answer.
Okay, yeah, and that's, it's good to know that it's, it's not just a way, the way the new system counts or records something and it's just a.
Yeah, because I mean, the fact of I need an ambulance, don't need an ambulance is still pretty very basic. It's figuring out what type of resources you get.
Thank you.
So Chuck, I have a question for you. The police commission is due to review this budget. I see one meeting Thursday after the perf presentation. Is there a second meeting scheduled as well?
Yes.
When is that?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Monday.
Monday.
And then maybe the fourteenth, fifteenth.
And if we need it, it's the fourteenth.
Okay, okay.
Well, that's not.
I'm optimistic that we won't need it.
No, but that's not even, you may agree on that. But you can't just assume that we're all available.
We talked about it the last week.
Do you want me to briefly do my executive proposal or are you going to wait for the police commission meeting on Thursday?
I think the goals, I think everybody would be interested in your goals.
Okay, I'll do them very, very quick. Any other questions on, on the budget? I know it's long. Thank you for your attention. This is very important, right? So I think we really can't complain that we spent two hours in a five million dollar budget. Okay, my executive goals, just so everyone knows, this is kind of a process. So it starts with my own staff. So every year, as part of our employee centric culture, we have a department strategic planning session where our staff has lots of input on everything. Everything that we've done, really almost everything since two thousand and nine, has been personnel generated from what cars we drive, to the look of our uniforms, to the latest and greatest safety gear. Thank you very much for finding that for our, our police officers. So I listen to them and I ask them lots of questions about me and how I can help them. And what do we need for the department? How can we be more officially responsive and efficient, et cetera, et cetera? So my goal setting really starts with them. And then I ask for commissioner input. I ask for some external stakeholder input. Sometimes I go and see people and say, what do you think would be important for the department over the next year? What do you think I should be focusing on? And then I announce my executive goals in, in January. I follow a SMART goal format that all, any of my goals need to be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. We also do goal-setting as an entire agency during strategic planning. And sometimes we do that throughout the, the year with individual officers. My twenty twenty-four executive goals, some of them I'm actually still working on. One of it, oh boy, what happened there? Okay, it's up on the screen. So one of them that I'm still working on is completing my master's degree in public administration. So that'll be definitely accomplished in twenty twenty-five. The second one was lead a team of professionals to prepare for an accreditation process. We talked about that historic accreditation achievement by our agency. So that was done. We reactivated, restarted the police explorer program. Hopefully you folks saw some of them out. At the torchlight parade, we had the police explorers and the two coordinators come and present to the police commission. Work with the police commission to bring the evaluation matter to a resolution, one way or the other. The second half of twenty twenty-four was kind of a little bit tumultuous. And I don't think that that was the proper time to sit down and have a conversation with the police commission about that. So I pushed that to twenty twenty-five, hoping that we're still going to have some sort of positive conversation about that. I worked with the police commission to develop the framework for department staffing and structure plan. I did that. It was presented not only in a booklet form, but also in a presentation. After three or four meetings of consideration, the police commission eventually chose one of the options that I presented and approved that. Work internally and with the police commission on succession planning, that was also part of that same project. I combined those two. We had hoped to hold a town hall meeting with the public and the department's leadership team. I thought that was actually going to be part of the perf review. It's not. So hopefully we'll be able to do that in twenty twenty-five in the, in a similar format. What I want to be able to do is take our department leaders, sit them in a room with any community member that wants to come, just have a conversation. Why do you guys do this? How come you have to use your sirens all of that? Whatever it is, let's just talk about it. And instead of me delivering the information, have my leadership team do that. Have a summertime community picnic. We did that with our school supply handout, which was very fun. And then continue to be a bold, vocal, public safety leader. I certainly check off all of those boxes. Now for twenty twenty-five. Try, one more. Let's try one more thing, boys and girls. Just want to show you the near screen. Not sure I have a near screen or that. That's okay. So there it is, complete my master's degree in public administration. I really want to increase the virtual and remote professional development opportunities for police officers and dispatchers. We've done this a little bit over the last year. So there's lots of training requirements. And then there's additional professional development experiences that would be great for personnel. And so traditionally, it was come to the station, get in your uniform, get in a car, go to the police academy. Or if it was virtual, come to the police station, get in your uniform, sit in our training room. And now we've moved to stay home. You're going to be on camera. It's the same education. But if you want to be home to make sure that when the kids come home, you can open the door or whatever, totally cool with that. So what I want to do is create more opportunities for that over the next year. And I think we'll be successful at that. Commissioner Ciliano actually gave me a great recommendation, something I used to do. And with his encouragement, we're going to get back into that. I used to meet and now will meet again with our police and dispatch union leadership quarterly. We're not a big agency, right? And so we see each other every day. So it's not like I have to wait for a quarterly meeting to see the union president and have a conversation with him or her about what's going on or any concerns. So we'll continue to do that, but we'll have these formal meetings where we can turn down, make an agenda. And maybe there's some things that both unions, who never really talk union stuff together. Maybe there's something we can do as three different groups that we can come to Carl with. So we'll do that. Going to facilitate an instructive program for more police officers to attain their ENT certification. So in the contract, it actually requires them to attain this certification. I have received some permission from the education and training committee at the Department of Public Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services to, to teach kind of a unique course for our police officers that have tremendous experience, eighteen hundred medical calls. So they don't need to start from square one in a class. And so I'll be instructing them. In fact, in your budget books, when you look at the vacation time, there's a category for ENT. You'll see the number three in italicized. Those are the folks that will be taking the class and we anticipate that they'll, they'll pass. I currently have a hundred percent passing rate because I'm instructors. So no one better sense of that. So we started that actually shortly. Enhanced community traffic safety programs such as child safety seat, safe walking, safe ride home, and bicycle safety programs. So we have folks that are trained to be car seat technicians. I'm going to have them deployed more to daycares and to community fairs. They did something with the Lions Club a while back. So we're just going to be more in the community doing those things. There are other traffic safety programs that I really think we need to walk, work with, safe walking. I work with an ad hoc committee on some bicycle safety stuff. So I think that this is really important. We're encouraging people to enjoy Old Saver and to get out and walk and bike and do those things. I think that there's a safety education component to that. And, and I certainly want our agency to be part of that. Um, there it is. Provide the police commission with a proposal on the department's fleet. Um, so over the course of the next year, that'll be one of my deliverables to the police commission. There's that, hold a community meeting with the department's leadership team. That's a carryover. The annual valuation is a carryover. Uh, promote and mentor new members of the department's leadership team in accordance with the commission's approved plan. So we're going to be making promotions. And one of my goals is not just to be like, hey, congratulations, you're a sergeant. Good luck. I want to have some formal mentoring that goes on. So we know over the years that there are certain things you need to know, being a new sergeant or lieutenant. We'll have checkoff lists like we do for every other position that someone's new to, to get trained. And then there'll be an existing mentoring relationship, whether that's with me or another tenured first-line supervisor and something that I just supervise. Uh, I think that's very important to the future, uh, our, of our agency and the, the personal professional growth of our teammates. Um, and then create opportunities for all employees to have formal and meaningful interaction with the police commission. I've kind of unofficially started this. Um, just so everyone in the room knows, uh, number one, over the last year, there has been a new edict issued to me by the police commission that when we receive a civilian complaint, after that civilian complaint has been closed, if it doesn't require adjudication by the police commission, we go into executive session and the police commission is briefed completely on that civilian complaint. So no longer do they hang outside, everything goes back to the police commission. There's actually a provision, if there's a complaint about me, and how that would be handled. And so the complete, the police commission did that the last year. Secondly, the police commission sees people right before they get hired, right? So they are the hiring authority. Nobody gets hired as a sworn member of our department unless the police commission votes favorably to hire them. But then they never saw them again. And so after these folks graduate the police academy and they're done with field training and they've been on the road a little bit, we're starting to bring them back where the police commission can discuss their performance and perhaps their view of other personnel during their hiring process and training process. So the commission kind of sees them at the beginning, at the end, and knows whether, if they have to ask me any questions based on their answers about what's going on with their process. Thirdly, and what speaks to this goal is, I'd like to see every member of our agency, no matter your rank or tenure, come before the police commission in some sort of capacity in the next twelve months. They need to have face time with the top box on the organizational chart. And so that could be a presentation on what they do. That could be a group of people that was involved in something and they came, uh, to the, the police commission to, to maybe get acknowledged for what they did. But somehow, some way, I'd like to get everyone, uh, to the table and have some face time, um, with the police. That's what I got.
Very ambitious.
Thank you. No. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I turn it back over to the chairman? Well, listen, in summary, excellent. Thank you for your time and attention. I know it was long. Um, you're the only people that will listen to me this long. So I appreciate that. And if anyone does have any questions or comments, or if you found another error, please call me. All of my cell phones, all of my email. Be more than happy to spend whatever time it takes to get you comfortable with it. Thank you.
Next line is, uh, comments from board members. If there are any board members, uh, on any of the board, pushing to comment, this would be a time to raise your hand. So now I'm into, uh, public comment. If, uh, there's any member of the public here who would like to raise your hand. How about our virtual?
Uh, we do have one hand raised.
Hi, I'm, I'm Commissioner Von Dassel. I just want to apologize for not being there tonight, but I have been attending virtually. Um, I will save my comments for later, but thank you for everybody participating.
And, uh, last, before adjournment, comments from the chairs. I've, uh. Yeah, uh, did you hand out the salary schedule through?
I hand out to the board of finance and board of selectmen, the salary schedule and the memos. And, um, that is going to be in every single presentation that you're going to see, as well as the first draft of the budget that I know so far. So, um, that's just reference materials for as we move through the process.
No, no, we're not.
Well, eventually when I, when I put the budget book up, but.
Let me rephrase this. Uh, it's going to be sent to us by email.
Oh, yeah, I can do that.
Bruce?
I have no comment at this time.
Thank you all very much, uh, for a long evening. Uh, I invite a motion to adjourn.
Will you adjourn?